If you do lose power, you can call in is one way to do it using the call in number. And the pin number to call back in and if it's in the middle of your presentation. We will probably we'll give it a few minutes and then we'll probably move on to the next person. But if you contact us during the meeting still, we'll pick back up where we left off with you. So don't, don't panic too much. I know that's possible. We've had before people lose power. So if that happens, don't panic. We're not going to not hear you. We will do everything we can to hear you this evening. So without further ado, Mary Beth, over to you.
Thank you. Thank you. As a preliminary matter, this is Mary Beth Lynch. And I please permit me to confirm that all members and staff are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Paul George.
Present.
Lisa Cosette.
Present.
Peter Mulcahy.
Present.
Patrick Fulon.
Present.
And Pat and Matt Armenti.
Present.
Thank you. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bernard Cahill.
Present.
Rowan McAllister.
Present.
Kristen Repolo.
Present.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is the open meeting of the zoning board of appeals and is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the Corona 19 virus. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the zoning board of appeals is convened by telephone conference and video conference via Google Hangout. You may join by telephoning the following number, 1-513-839-2989, and enter the following PIN, 874-351-950 pound. For now, turning to the first item on the agenda, before we do so, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our meeting and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Mary Beth Lynch, will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for this particular item or guest or speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members first and then to staff members inviting each by name to provide any comment or question. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then for a second. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute and unmute your phone by pressing star six or mute your computer when you're not speaking as to not trigger your camera feed or background noise. After members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify themselves by name and address only. For any responses, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Okay. First item of business, I'm sorry, in addition to keeping your microphones muted until called upon, I would remind the public that please keep any questions or comments brief and to the point and all questions should be made through the chair. First order of business is to approve an expense, two bills to Worcester Telegram and Gazette for legal notices dated October 26th, 2020 in the amounts of $3.92 and $98. I entertain a motion to approve the bills as read and is there a second?
Motion to approve bills?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our first public hearing. This is a request to withdraw and this is a continuation from our October 26th, 2020 meeting. 257 Main Street, multifamily two and residence B1, Whitney Street Home Builders LLC, One Golden Court, Westboro, Mass. An administrative appeal, section seven, F3D and section 4D for persons aggrieved by the action of the planning board. The applicant has submitted a request to withdraw their application without prejudice. The withdrawal letter was and is available for the board's review on the ZBA Google Drive folder. Are there any comments or questions by any board members?
None at this time.
Is there a motion to accept the withdrawal of this applicant?
Motion to accept withdrawal.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Mary Beth, aye. Moving along to the second agenda item, I will recuse myself for consideration of this agenda item and I ask the vice chair, Lisa Cosette, to act as a chair and associate member Matt Armenti will act as a fifth member of this board. Lisa, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I believe we might be slightly out of order. I'm not sure. But I will read the legal notice for the next hearing. We are here at 6:30 PM November 30th to hear the appeal of Justin Santello for Norwood Avenue, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, for a special permit to the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under section 4B to extend a sunroom and construct a deck on an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling upon property located at 45 Colton Lane in the residence B1 district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 16 Plot 037000. And Mr. Cahill, if you would, if you could show us the plot plan for this hearing.
Certainly one second here.
And in the meantime, if I believe Justin is on the line, if you could tell us about your request.
Lisa, can you see the plot?
Yes. Yes. So if Justin is here, you can unmute and tell us a little bit about what you're proposing to do.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for hearing this. If you could actually first listen to the owners, Jack and Susan Hizak.
Sure. Jack and Susan?
Good evening. I'm Jack and Susan Clearly. We are the owners of 45 Colton Lane. We purchased the home in September of this year. We purchased it for three major reasons that we'd like you to be aware of. First is we love Shrewsbury. We were residents of Shrewsbury for 20 years from 84 to 2004. Raised our three sons there, all who went to Shrewsbury High. We had to move away in 2004 for business. Now that we're retired, we're able to pick and choose the place where we want to live. The second reason is that, as you probably know, our property abuts the Colstrom Forest and it's a beautiful place and we love the hiking trails and we'll and have availed ourselves of that for many times. And the cherry on top is season number three is that our 19-month-old grandson just moved into 65 Westwood Avenue, one block away. And that is the kicker in this whole thing. But the reason that we're anxious to invest in this property for the long term, for the rest of our life, for that reason. I'd also like the board to know that before Justin submitted the permit request, we did go and talk to each of seven closest neighbors, two on each side of us and three across the street. And we explained to them what we were doing. We introduced ourselves. And I think you have in your records or in your files their signature saying that they approved. We're in agreement with the plan. So again, the point is that we want to enhance the property. We're investing quite a bit to do that and we'll be good caretakers, especially of that view of the forest.
Thank you. Justin, as the person who applied for this appeal, could you please describe a little bit more about it, that it's a non-conforming property and what it is you plan to do?
Yeah, so the existing setback, if you look at the plans, it's just about 30 feet to the rear of the house. So what we're actually looking to do is there's an existing sunroom, the back corner of the house. So we're looking to can a lever, the wall two feet additional. So it would be a two-foot addition, but it would not require any footings or foundation under this addition. And it would stay within the existing roof line. This house has like almost three-foot soffits. So this two-feet addition to the sunroom would stay within the roof and would not need to alter the roof line at all to do so. So that would be the first on the list on the special permit request. And the second on the, on the plot plan there showing a deck. Existing is a large field stone foundation that's kind of failing and pitching towards the house. So we'd like to remove this existing patio and create it away from the house and construct a deck that would serve as egress for the back doors and also a small area for Jack and Susan to enjoy the backyard.
Thank you. Members of the board, I'm going to open it up for questions. I'll go in order of who I see first. So Mr. George, do you have any questions for the appellant?
Yes, I do. I was just wondering if you had any architectural plans of what this is going to look like?
We did submit a couple existing photos on the appeal of what the existing sunroom looks like. And the existing sunroom does have large windows and a door. It would be keeping with the same exact design. It'd only be enlarging one wall of the sunroom, the two-feet step out.
Mr. George, on the, on the Google Drive, there is a document.
I have it.
Okay, and red drawing. Okay.
I was just wondering if there was going to be any foundation work added to this?
No, the existing floor joists do run front to back. So we would just be removing the outside, you know, ribbon and just extending with the can of lever the floor system, two feet. So it would just be altering the existing floor system and then pushing that wall two feet out.
So you're using the same footprint?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Ms. Lynch?
No comment.
Mr. Fulon?
Oh, I'm good with that.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Nothing for me.
Okay. So now I'd like to, Mr. Cahill, if it's all right to do so. At this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment. And I would like to, whoever would like to speak, please give us your name and address and address your questions through me, the chair.
Did you ask, excuse me, did you ask Matt if he had any comments?
I cannot see Matt. That's why. Okay. Okay, thank you. So I would like to now open this up for public comment. If there are any abutters or anyone who would like to make a comment, please unmute and let me know your name and address and I will go ahead and take your comment. Wait a second. Sometimes it takes a little doing to unmute. I believe it's star six. Okay, there being no comments from the public. Is there any discussion from the board? Okay, there being none. Do I have a motion?
So we even need a first, first emotion to close the public hearing. Yep.
Yes, sorry about that.
That's all right.
New procedure. So can I have a motion to close the public hearing for 45 Colton Lane?
I moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. So is there any discussion on the board? If not, I would need a motion. No discussion. So is there a motion for this appeal?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Mr. George?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch? Oh, I'm so sorry. Hi, you're, you're recused. Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Fulon?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
All right. So 45 Colton Lane has been unanimously approved and I will turn it back over to Ms. Lynch, who was actually recused from that last hearing. So sorry, I apologize.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Lisa.
Sure.
Okay, next agenda item is a continuation from the October 26th, 2020 meeting to hear the appeal of 727 Hartford Turnpike, TJCF Realty LLC, 894 Boston Turnpike, Shrewsbury, Mass. Section six, table one, to amend the 2002 variance granted under section six, table one of the zoning, Shrewsbury zoning bylaws to operate an auto repair garage without the conditions voted upon in the January 23rd, 2002 hearing. The public hearing for 727 Hartford Turnpike was continued from the board's meeting on October 26th in order for the appellant to first obtain the necessary license from the board of selectmen. I'd like the appellant to update the board on the outcome of that meeting with the selectmen and what conditions, if any, were added by the selectmen. Is the appellant in? Do we have an appellant here?
Yes, it's Peter Bemis, engineering design consultant representing the proponent TJCF Realty LLC.
Welcome back, Peter.
Madam Chair, if I can interrupt for just one second, I did sign a muller letter for this hearing because I was not present for the earlier hearing.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you very much. Peter Bemis, could I ask you to step in and give us an idea of what transpired at the board of selectmen meeting, please?
Yeah, well, we received our license for the facility and the board voted with one member asking to place a condition about the 61 parking spaces that we are proposing at the rear of the facility, that they be related to the uses of this facility and not connected with Mr. Foley's facility on Route nine. And we had explained that these spaces for the vehicles that will be serviced at this location. So that is our intent and we don't anticipate commingling our sites here in any manner. So we said that was acceptable.
Thank you. Mr. Cahill, do you have anything else to add?
Yes, the board, the board of selectmen addressed the, what the parking spaces and the storage spaces were to be used for. They did not address the number. So they did not put a condition on the number. So this board should be aware that that is still an open question. In amending the 2002 variance, the limit in 2002 was 30 spaces and this one is for more than 30 spaces. Currently, I believe they're showing 60 on the plan. Building and planning did have some concerns about the five repair spaces. As you can see on the plan before you, next to the, where this says containers. Building in particular had concerns about fire safety access around the building and the need for those five spaces, but that is for the board to deliberate and decide upon. Otherwise, they did receive their license as Mr. Bemis just mentioned. So it's for the board to amend this original variance to allow for more than 30 spaces, number to be determined by you, the board members, and also to allow for general automotive repair. Currently, it's restricted, if you recall, to, I believe it's transmissions only. So those were the two amendments being sought this evening.
Thank you, Bernie. I will now ask, one at a time, if the board has any questions or comments for the applicant. And I'd like to start with Lisa Cosette. Do you have any questions?
I believe I asked this last time, but I will ask again and it's really for Mr. Cahill, not the appellant. Has the fire chief looked at this plan and is there enough egress and turnaround for vehicles, safety vehicles?
I do not know if the fire chief has looked at this plan. I don't recall the board requesting that the fire chief look at the plan. If you did, my apologies. I know the building inspector looked at it and that was one of her concerns with those five spaces.
My second question is about the five spaces. Do you mean the five employee spaces or?
No, to the rear of the building next to where it says the word shed. I don't know if you can see my little hand cursor.
Yes.
Kind of going in a circle. So those five there next to, the other question wasn't just that. The question was also getting like a dump truck in there, not a dump truck, but a waste management truck or one of those to get to the dumpster and the return, you know, turning radiuses and those types of things.
So I, I will say that's my concern. It's really the proximity, the perimeter around the building itself that I was concerned about. So I'll, but you've answered my question. So I'll move on to the next person.
Thank you. Peter Mulcahy, do you have any questions for the appellant?
I mean, I had similar concerns to Ms. Cosette. It occurs to me where there are 30 spaces previously allowed and we're doubling it to 60 how necessary those five are. I don't know if the appellant has any particular comment on that, but that would be helpful information.
Well, I'd be happy to answer that. So, you know, the facility will, will have more use, I believe, than it previously had. We have five full-time mechanics that will be here and then there's one day that's going to be for the alignment of vehicles. So there's a little bit more transient traffic, traffic that's needed here for the vehicles to be able to be serviced in a given day and dropped off. So that's, that's the issue for having a spot for a vehicle to be placed after it's completed and out. So we're trying to keep everything to the rear of the building and there's enough space here to put those vehicles in those locations. So we really just wanted to have a marked location, have it approved by the board and recognized. Some repairs take half an hour to complete. You know, some repairs could take all day to complete. So it just depends on what the daily activity would be for doing oil changes and tire rotations versus taking apart an engine or something to that effect.
Right.
So the ability to overflow.
Sure. I think my question was sort of specifically about those five spaces that are an issue for the building inspector.
Oh, the five, yeah, if we have to eliminate the five, we, you know, we can, we, we put them there because those are really going to be more the transient spaces. Those would be something coming in, coming out, you know, quickly. So I'm less concerned about those. It's more the perimeter spaces that we were having. So if it comes down to having to eliminate those five, you know, that's fine. There's.
That's actually very helpful because it sounds like they're going to be used for to sort of swap vehicles from the repair base or something like that as opposed to longer term.
Exactly. That they're really just transient spaces. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask Paul, do you have any questions?
None at this time.
Patrick, do you have any questions?
No, that answered my questions.
Thank you. And I too had a similar thought and concern about the five repair spaces. They do seem to be kind of right in the middle of everything. And I think my thoughts would be removing them would open the site up and remove any concerns of fire, safety and egress. Is there a motion to close the public, I'm sorry, now I need to, this is a public hearing and I need to open this up to any members of the public who have questions or comments. And I remind the public to please keep their questions and comments brief and to the point. And I'm going to open this up for a second to see if anybody out there would like to comment. Okay. Nod of a head. Do you think I've given enough time? Okay, wonderful. I like that. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close?
There's a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye. Okay. Anybody have comments?
I don't. Aside from, I would appreciate if we could remove the five repair spaces closer to the building. So there would be, we would be approving that. Do we have to count up the spaces, I guess?
So I want to be sure. I think we're going, so if that's what the board agrees to, we'd go from 60 to 55. Is that correct?
Correct.
It's 61 in the, I'm sorry, Bernie, it is, there's, there's 61 spaces in the rear of the building marked.
24.
It's a 22, 14, 10, 10 and 5.
22, 14, 10.
Yep.
10 and 5.
61.
Okay, so it'd actually be 56 spaces. And I could put a note about the location of those five spaces in the decision itself, not to be located to the rear of the building. There was also, I wanted to bring or remind the board in the planner comment letter that I sent to you a couple of weeks ago, there was a recommendation to add a condition that the stored spaces will not be used for onsite sales of any automobiles. This is an issue throughout town where we find people may not be licensed for something and they're doing that activity anyways. And I'm not pointing to, certainly not pointing to this applicant or owner as being guilty of that. However, we do it as a precaution now because it is becoming an issue. So I would like the board to at least entertain considering that, that condition.
Okay.
So I'm hearing two conditions so far, right?
Bernie, can I just ask a question procedurally? Is there, are the, are they striped? Do they have to be striped?
My understanding from this plan and as it's been presented to us, these will be striped. Over time, does it become an enforcement thing about keeping up with striping over the years? Sure, it's very hard to enforce that. But initially, we anticipate that they will be striped. Yeah, so I think the way the decision, if the board decides to go this way, the decision would read amend to 55 spaces, 56 spaces, excuse me, and allow for general automotive repair. And then the conditions would be the, the one about sales and the other condition would be about no placement of parking spaces immediately to the rear of the building. So they know how to configure those 56 spaces. If that makes sense to the board.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Any comments? Patrick?
No, I like that.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that whole parking area was paved already?
It is.
I believe it. It says, I understood that it was. That's why it says B I T on the plan, the two minutes concrete. Or, but we can ask, I mean, that's an informational question. We can probably ask Peter that question even though the hearing's closed. Is it currently paved, Peter?
Yes, some portions of it were disturbed as part of what we had done, but our intent was to put the pavement back. So generally speaking, yes, it's paved.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to need a motion?
So I'm getting that ready. Okay, notice it between, okay.
We're amending.
I'm going to say it this way. If there's no further discussion, Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the variance for, oops, I gotta get the.
You're going to amend it first, Lisa.
For a 727 Hartford Turnpike to amend the appeal of 727 Hartford Turnpike, amend it to 56 paved and marked spaces for general auto repair with two conditions. One being that storage spaces shall be used for repair vehicles only and that at no time. that storage spaces shall be used for repair vehicles only, and that at no time shall storage spaces be used for the sale of vehicles. And the second condition is that no spaces are to be between the wetland buffer and the rear of the building. If you think that's sufficient.
Can I get a second on that? Does that? More in a second.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So moved.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bemis. Okay. Next up, to hear the appeal of Two Deerfield Road, Nicole and Stephen Turnblum. This is for a special permit, section 4B, to construct an addition on an existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The public hearing for Two Deerfield Road is a new public hearing. Could the appellant please introduce themselves and explain their application to the board and to the public?
Hello, everyone. I'm Stephen Turnblum, Two Deerfield Road. On August 4th, a tree came down and damaged the rear of our house. Since then, we've been considering different ways to expand our house while we repair the damage. We have a growing family and decided it would be best to put an addition on the rear of the house. We have a corner lot, and the existing house is non-conforming on the Barnard Street side, which is a front yard setback. We are asking for a special permit to construct the addition. The addition will not be closer to the Barnard Street lot line than that the house is now, and all the other setback requirements will be met. Any questions you guys have, I can answer, and that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Turnblum. Mr. Cahill, do you have anything to add to this?
No comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay, I'll ask each of the board if they have any questions or comments for the applicant, and I'd like to start with first one on my list is Paul George. Questions, comments?
Yes, thank you.
Patrick Fulon, any questions or comments?
No comments.
Thank you. Peter?
Nothing for me.
Lisa?
Nothing for me either. Looks straightforward.
Thank you. I'm all set as well. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who have questions or comments who would like to be heard on this matter? And I remind the public to please keep their questions and comments brief and to the point. I'm going to open this up for a few seconds in case there is anyone out there that would like to comment. The knot of the head, have I given it enough time? Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close.
Can I get a second? All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And do I have a motion to approve a special permit to construct a 10 by 28 deck, and I'm sorry, addition at Two Deerfield Road?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye. So moved. Thank you, Mr. Turnblum.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next hearing is to hear the appeal of 56 Elm Street, Jonathan Remkus. This is for a special permit, section 4B, to remove a sunroom on an existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling and construct an addition with a deck. This is a public hearing for 56 Elm Street, and it's a new public hearing. Could the applicant please introduce themselves and explain the application to the board, please?
Hello, Board. Jonathan Remkus from 56 Elm Street. The violation is the front edge, I'm short four inches for the non-conforming part. So the existing sunroom experienced water damage and from multiple storms, and the roof was starting to collapse. And none of the existing, for the sun porch, I think it was built in 1956, didn't conform to any building standards. Because it was prior to that, so I want to put an additional living area on the existing foundation on that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Bernie, is there anything additional you can add to this?
No, I think Mr. Remkus did a good job. This is about as close as it gets to being non-conforming. It's literally off by a couple inches. And as you can see, it's the new deck as well, the 10 by 12 deck out the back, but otherwise, I think he did a good job summarizing.
Thank you. Great, um. Okay, so I'm going to go through the board one by one, ask to see if there's any questions or comments. I will start with Lisa.
I have no questions or comments. Very straightforward. Thank you.
Paul George?
None at this time.
Thank you. Patrick Fulon?
I'm good.
Peter Mulcahy?
Nothing for me, thank you.
And I have no questions as well, and thank you to Mr. Remkus for the good information on this. This is a public hearing. I'd like to open this up to the public for their comments and questions. Is there anybody out there that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay, going once, going twice, knot of the head. Have I, okay, wonderful. Is there a motion to close a public hearing?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second, please?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye. Thank you. And do I have a motion to approve the special permit to convert a three-season porch into livable space and to construct a new 10 by 12 deck at 56 Elm Street?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Thank you. Mary Beth, aye. So moved. Thank you very much. Okay. Next up on our agenda is to hear the appeal for variance at 235 Main Street. Section 6, Table 1, and Section 7, Table 2, for a use variance for a medical dental office with insufficient frontage. The public hearing for 235 Main Street is a new public hearing. Could the applicant please introduce themselves and explain their application to the board? Mr. Rickert?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Richard Rickert, and I'm an attorney with law offices at 11 Maple Avenue, and I'm representing the petitions in this case, Louven Realty. With us here tonight are Vin and Luciana Messina, who are the principals of Louven Realty. And she is also, Mrs. Messina is also the operator of Songbird Dental in Shrewsbury Center, which some of you may be aware of. It was in the, it's in the yellow building there. This is a request for two variances, although I'm going to withdraw one request, which is the frontage request, because I am informed that that is no longer necessary. This property predates zoning, and as such, does not require a variance for the frontage requirements. The, the main variance is very similar to the one that this board heard back in 2014 and 15, when a request was made for an 8,000 square foot medical office building, and that variance was allowed. This site has a lengthy history of commercial use dating back all the way to 1950. If we go to the beginnings of Lundgren and Genitis Dairy and Distribution Plant. And thereafter, after Lundgren and Genitis, Whittier Farms Dairy Processing and Distribution Facility was there. Thereafter, the Shriver Nursing Services was granted a permit by this board, again, for a facility for the administration of their nursing facilities. And it was an administrative facility, but it was also a more intensive use of this property. That was a 5,600 square foot building that was planned for them at that time. And then we get back to 2014 and 15 with the Dr. Zachariah variance, in which case this board did find that there was hardship and that it was topographical in nature because of the size and shape and topography of the lot and the building that was taken down. I would suggest to you respectfully that hardship continues inasmuch as that building caused a problem both before and after its demolition. The building was taken down because of a request by the town based on safety reasons. The owners did cooperate with the town, and they took the building down. But by taking that building down, they turned this process, and they give us a hardship by turning the process into a variance request rather than a special permit. This is, as I said earlier, this is a less intensive application and proposal than all the previous uses and proposals. The, the property, as I said, has a long history of commercial viability and use, and what it, and based on that, the property has remained expensive and has remained highly taxed. And in addition to the hardships that I've noted, I would suggest to you respectfully that there is an additional hardship, a financial hardship, were this not to be able to be used for the business use as suggested. I would suggest it wouldn't, it doesn't derogate from the intent or purposes of bylaw. This is, this is a long-used commercial site. It's been there. It's always been used there. Until the building was taken down, it was, it was busy. I would suggest also that this, these issues are incidental only to this site in this area. This is a large lot. It is hampered in many different areas of the lot with wetlands. I suggest to you that this is a better use than popping a few houses in there. And it will not create a nuisance, as you can see from the elevations that we have given you. It's an attractive-looking building. There's going to, it's a proposal that is going to require great expense, and it's going to greatly improve the lot. We have met with the immediate neighbors to the front at 239, and the Gannon's, and at least one of the neighbor down there. But we didn't do the normal door. I hope the neighbors that we have not contacted forgive us for that, but the bottom line is, we do think this is a better proposal than the last, than all of the previous ones. And it is for a dentist to relocate or practice within town. I will also note to you that the proponent has got a few other things to do here. We're going to have to be in front of the Conservation Commission. We're going to have to be in front of the planning board, which is where all of the matters of stormwater retention and drainage on the site and things of that nature will be addressed, as well as the lighting that is going to be there, as well as parking, any other parking questions that you may not have, maneuverability issues and things like that. So, and screening, of course. So, so there's a few hurdles yet to deal with on this site. It is a difficult site. It is, as I suggest to you, hampered. There is a, a stream that runs under it and through it. So that causes some issues with the placement of a building on the site, so, but those can all be addressed. With that, if you, if, Mr. Mulcahy, if you want me to cite any case law from Bobrovsky, I'll be happy to do that. But it does meet the requirements of the Kirkwood case that he does talk about relative to using, making a lot economically feasible for use instead of a single family, so. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, and as I say, my clients are with us, so if you have any questions, I can't answer, they truly can.
Thank you, Attorney Rickert. Bernie, can I ask you to put the plans up, please?
Oh, are they not up?
The plot plan is.
The plot plans, the elevations are not up, right?
Yeah.
Did you want the elevations?
Yeah, if I could.
All right. Give me a second. I did not have those ready.
I'm sorry.
No, it's my fault. Should have had them ready.
See what it's going to look like?
I thought they were in your packet.
Oh, yeah, I got them. It's good for the public, their consumption. Right, so that's, I'm not going to be able to fit both sides on the screen, so this is the front view. You can zoom in a little more here. So that'd be the entrance, and then pull into the right here, this would be the right side elevation.
Thank you.
I would reiterate, before you go to the rest of the board, what Attorney Rickert said is this will be subject to conservation approval and also site plan and special permit from the planning board because it is within the Aquifer Protection Overlay District. So it would be site plan and special permit where things like vegetation, screening, traffic circulation, lighting, and then stormwater and drainage get dealt with as well. And since 2014, the last time a, the larger business use was approved on this site, we now actually have what's called a stormwater utility. So that's an additional protection for neighbors in terms of drainage, and a stormwater permit has to be applied for and received from the DPW, so.
And actually, the requirements are somewhat more stringent than that as well.
Correct, but Madam Chair, I don't, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to continue this on with conversation amongst the board, and I'm going to ask Lisa, do you have any questions or comments?
I think I just have a comment. I do think we have some special circumstances here due to the historical use and the request of the town to demolish the existing structure, so because of those special considerations, I'm leaning toward approving this, and also it's much less intrusive than the 8,000 square foot building we had approved before, and I really don't have too many questions because I think the nuisance, traffic, all of that will be handled in minute detail with the other boards, so I just wanted to put that out there where I stand.
Great, thank you. Paul George, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I was wondering how far, how close the building, or how far the building has to be away from residential home.
Attorney Rickert?
Maybe Bernie could answer that.
I think 50 feet, Paul.
Bernie, can you confirm that? You muted. Muted, Bernie.
Sorry, yeah, I just saw that. 50 feet is correct for the side yard setback. It's not distance to a budding structure.
So is this similar to the back that happened a couple of months ago?
Yeah, no, it isn't, because this is the same zone as the properties around it. So it's not, it's not a zone line.
But isn't that, isn't that abutted by residential?
That requirement is only required by a bylaw when there is a zone line separating the lots.
Isn't there a zone line that goes through here?
No.
No, to change a use.
Isn't it rural?
Because it's residential as well.
Yeah, it's, it is. It is. That's why it's a use variance request. Yeah, it's, it is, it is, that's why it's a use variance request, right? But that doesn't, that does not trigger that, that 100-foot requirement though, Paul.
Mr. George, did, any other questions?
That question I don't think was really answered, but that's all I have for now.
Okay, we can pick it back up, it's discussion time. Peter Mulcahy, any questions?
Just a comment, appreciate counsel for our presentation as always. I think that it does meet the threshold required, I think it's great, I support it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, any questions, comments?
No questions.
Thank you. I have myself no questions, just comment, I do think it's a fair use for this site and I do think it's, given past boards' decisions on this, going from an 8,000 square foot structure to a 4,000 seems fair to me. Okay, I'd like to motion to close the public, oh, wait a minute, I have to get the public comments. Since it is a public hearing, are there any members of the public who wishes to be heard on this matter? I'll give you a second to unmute yourself, it's star six if you have anyone out there that would like to be heard. I do not think there's anyone out there to be heard, I'm hearing, seeing a lot of shaking of heads, so I'm gonna move right on and I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Can I get a second? Hey, all in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Paul?
I just wanna make one comment before we close the hearing. I guess if any abutters had concerns about the close proximity of a building, they would have been here and spoke on it, so I'm in favor of closing the hearing.
Thank you, Paul, thank you. Peter?
Aye.
And Patrick?
Aye.
And Mary Beth, aye. So I'm going to need a motion to accept the withdrawal of the variance for inadequate lot frontage and to approve the use variance to allow for the construction and operation of a 4,080 square foot medical dental office building at 235 Main Street. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Paul?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye, so moved. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, here the appeal of 6567 Lear Street in Aurora B District, Tony Nguyen and Sarah Vo for a special permit, section 4B, to remove a portion of the non-conforming single-family dwelling and construct an addition. The public hearing for 6567 Lear Street is a new public hearing. Could the applicant please introduce themselves and explain their application to the board and to the public?
Thank you, Madam Chair, again, this is Richard Ricker, I'm attorney representing Tony Nguyen relative to this proposal, my offices are at 11 Maple Avenue in Shrewsbury. This is going to entail, I believe, a request to continue as well because since the, since the filing of this and as recently as this morning, we have determined that it apparently needs a variance because of the different treatment of accessory buildings versus main structures. This entails a request to basically demolish the existing two-story garage and workshop building that is adjacent to this two-story dwelling. It is attached but by a four-foot retaining wall and a series of steps and patio. That, in discussions with the Building Department and with Mr. Cahill and with further discussions I know that he's had with Town Council, is determined not to be enough of a connection to enable this to be a special permit. In any event, this is, this, this does require a special permit however, in addition to a variance because this request is, you're taking a non-conforming structure. It's so non-conforming, it's in the layout of Lear Street frankly, and you're moving it back onto the lot and attaching it to the house. I suggest to you respectfully, it's a great proposal, it solves a lot of problems down there because it gets a structure off of Lear Street that's been there for quite some time. Even though Lear Street is a kind of a rough street to traverse, it's still a public way in the town of Shrewsbury. So that is what this entails, is basically pulling the structure, taking it down and building a new structure, but that structure will be in addition to the two-story dwelling. The structure that would be added to the dwelling, it involves garage space still on the first floor, two garage space and a workshop. On the second floor would be master suite together with a bathroom and an in-home office type of den. And basically, that is the proposal. This is on Lakewood Segment, as you can see, it's on Lear Street. The, the variance request will be because of the new non-conformity, even though the old structure was on the street and the new structure will be off the street, it's still got a new non-conformity because now, because it is attached to the dwelling, it's a, either a sideline, we've gotta kinda hash this out, it's either a sideline or a front yard setback variance because we're that close, as you can see from the plan in front of you, we're that close to the street that it's like an inch away, less than an inch. So it's, it's tight, but it does, you know, I think that this does accomplish something that we as a town would like to see done, which is get a, get a building off of a street, which otherwise would just remain there. And it cleans up, it cleans up the property greatly too. So that is the basic request. I know that, I'm not asking you to vote it tonight because, as a special permit, because the bottom line is that they, they should be determined together, the variance and the special request, the special permit request. And I think, Mr. Cahill, I think agrees with me that there's plenty of hardship here. I think the bottom line is that we just need to do it right. And in order to do that, I now will have to come back to see you in January because it's too late for me to file for the December hearing. So that's my request, is to continue this matter until January. But I'm, I'm here and the engineer is with us, Mr. Fassandola is with us somewhere in cyberspace here. And I know he's here, if you have any questions about the plan, then I'd encourage you to ask us.
Thank you, Attorney Ricker. Mr. Cahill, is there anything that you'd like to add?
I don't think so, I think Attorney Ricker did a really good job explaining the situation, but I'm happy to help clarify or answer any questions that any, anyone on the board or the public has at this time.
Thank you. I'm now gonna go and ask the members of the board if they have any questions or comments. I'd like to start with Lisa.
I think it's just a shame that you have to wait till January, that's it.
Thank you. Patrick, any comments, questions?
No.
Thank you. Peter, any comments or questions from you?
I would just comment that if there was ever a plot that met the hardship requirement for shape and topography and all those things, it's this one, so I agree that it's a shame that you have to wait until January.
Thank you, Paul?
No, no questions.
Thank you, I have no further questions. It is a public hearing, are there any members of the public who wishes to be heard on this matter? Give you a few seconds to unmute yourself, star six. All right, since I don't think there's anybody out there that wants to comment, so I'm going to need a motion to continue the public hearing to the zoning board meeting on January 25th, 2021. Can I get a second, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second, second.
Lisa?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Mary Beth, aye. Thank you very much. Next 6:30 hearing in front of us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Here the appeal on 6 Garfield Avenue from Christopher Walton. This is for a special permit to section 4B to construct a sunroom. This is a new public hearing, could the applicant please introduce themselves and explain their application to the board?
Yes, good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, this Beverly and Chris Walton here, thank you for seeing us tonight, spending the time. So it's pretty straightforward, it's a, an addition, a sunroom that we'd like to add on to an existing deck. So the deck was here when we purchased the home in 99 and the deck was rebuilt in 2013 and it basically is sunroom that will go on the deck, it won't extend any further past the existing deck. And as you can see, it has a flat roof on it that won't be any higher than the existing roof on the home. And so it's, it's really that straightforward.
Okay, thank you. Bernie, do we have any further comments?
No, I would note that there is a proposal for an upstairs deck as well, correct?
Yeah, so, so it's a flat roof and I apologize, the drawing, I got tired on the, I ran out of steam on that. And so it would have a railing on the, the upper deck, you can see a staircase that leads up to it. And so we're, the compromise was we're not losing our sunny deck, but we're also adding a sunroom. So there'll be a railing, you know, compliant railing up in the top there.
I'm gonna open this up for board discussion. Lisa?
So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to make sure that your existing setbacks, I'm trying to confirm how they will be changing.
Yeah, so, so I can explain, the existing deck, if you see the 32-foot, so that's how far the existing deck is from the setback now. And it won't be any further, the sunroom is gonna be placed right on top of that existing deck.
But you're also going to have an additional deck to the side of that.
No, that's actually, that deck where the mouse is a little, if the mouse is to the left, so that's existing, that whole deck is all existing.
Okay, so the sun, the sunroom is just taking up part of the existing deck.
Correct.
Okay, okay, that confirms it for me, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Patrick, are you done, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. Anything else, Lisa?
I did note in the planning comment letter that the, on the plot plan we were given, the zoning table information was incorrect, did that get cleared up or no?
Bernie, can you comment on that?
Says it's zoning residential B2.
I don't believe it did, however, when they come in for a building permit, we would have to have that correct. Since we know the correct zone, when we write the decision, we would just base it on the correct zone, which is essentially not much different than, it's non-conforming either way, let's put it that way.
Yeah.
Based on setbacks, so we'll just make sure we write it up the correct way.
Okay, thank you.
Patrick, comments, questions?
Yeah, I was just gonna comment on the, the plot plan with the correct information also, so I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
I'm all set.
Thank you, Peter?
All set, thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question, Mr. Walton, just the pipe that's, that's being shown on the, yes, can you just give us a?
Sure, yep, so that, that is a wood stove that we're proposing in the room. And so it would be a triple-wall pipe, so it's not something that would be hot or, and probably not hot when people are also using that deck, something that would be typically maybe used in the winter. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I'm gonna ask the obvious question, you are gonna do railing around the whole top and the deck as well, is that?
Yeah.
But had to ask.
Yeah, and I, I apologize, I should've had those in the drawing, but again, I ran, I did submit a hand draw and it's in that, and I know that was pretty voluminous, the plans that I sent in, but, so to answer your question, yes, there'll be a railing all the way around the top so that you, you can't go on to the roof. There'll be, you know, all, all four sides will have a railing and then the lower deck also around this staircase will have a railing.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is a public hearing, are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this matter? And if so, I'm gonna give you a few minutes to unmute yourself, star six. What do you think, guys? Give it enough time? Mr. Walton, you good with the amount of time we've given?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. So I need a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second, please? Okay, thank you, all in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
And Mary Beth, aye. So do I have a motion to approve a special permit to allow for the construction of a 12-foot, 3 and 7 16th inch by 11-foot, 7-inch addition, including a roof deck no greater than the square footage of the proposed addition within the dimensions of the existing deck at 6 Garfield Avenue?
Yep, motion to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Checking.
Great, thank you. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye, so moved, thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Walton?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next hearing, this is for 136 Walnut Street, Emily Mazzarella. This is for a special permit to section 4B to operate an in-home business for piano lessons. The public hearing for 136 Walnut Street is a new public hearing. Could the applicant please introduce themselves and explain their application to the board?
Hi, everyone, my name's Emily, I've taught piano lessons in Central Mass for the past seven years since finishing college and I just moved to Shrewsbury at the end of August and so I'm really excited to live here, looking at teaching some piano lessons out of my home. Most of the lessons would be private one-on-one lessons with a few semi-private lessons. My house is far enough from other houses that it wouldn't be audible to any of the neighbors and we have plenty of parking on the premises and I designated two parking spots that would be used. Lessons would mostly be after school hours or after work hours when students are available and no later than 9:00 PM. Usually it doesn't even go that late, but definitely not later than that. And happy to answer any other questions with details to help you come to a decision.
Wonderful, thank you. Bernie, do we have any additional information you'd like to add?
I don't believe so at this time. We do, I would let the applicant know, but also board members, typically for at-home businesses, we add a condition. at-home businesses, we add a condition just that they check back in with us a year from now, um, to see if there have been any complaints. We do this, it's not you, it's not music, it's, it's everyone who's doing an at-home business of any kind. Um, we did this recently this year in April for a dog grooming business, um, where we actually did receive some complaints, we did have to deal with it. I'm not anticipating any, but I just wanna let you know that we do, that's just like a standard condition we use. Um, so you check back in with us in a year, um, and then after that, you'd be probably good going forward. So otherwise, I don't have anything to say, I think it's, it's a great idea, so best of luck.
Great, thank you. Gonna open up to the board for discussion, Lisa?
I just have one question. Um, when you have recitals, are you planning on, if, when you can have more than 10 people in a room somewhere? Um, are you planning to do your recitals off-site or on the premises?
Oh, we had a wonderful virtual recital this year. Uh, it was great, and this is not students in my home, I'm teaching online right now. And, uh, but for when things reopen, I would look at getting a site off the premises, like renting a space.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. And I, I can imagine I play my music louder than your students will be playing the piano.
Yeah.
Thank you. Patrick, do we have any comments or questions?
No, I think, uh, I like the piano, and, uh, I think if you do the, um, standard condition and, uh, revisit it in a year, that sounds good.
Thank you, great, Paul?
Sounds good to me.
Great. Peter, I'm okay?
I'm all set, thanks.
Wonderful. Emily, you know we ask you to audition in front of the board, correct?
All right.
I, I'm kidding, I'm sure you're very, very capable. Um, so it is a public hearing, um, so I'm gonna ask if there's any members of the public that would like to be heard on this matter, and if so, I'm gonna ask you to do star six and pony right up. Dance a few, hum a few bars, let us know you're out there. Give you a few seconds. Okay. Doesn't sound like there's anyone out there that wants to chat about this, so I'm gonna ask if there's a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve a special permit to allow for the teaching of piano lessons as a customary home occupation at 136 Walnut Street, including the condition that this special permit be valid for a period of one year, whereupon the applicant shall submit to the board of appeals an application for renewal of special permit? Is there?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Great, all in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye, so moved. Wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, um, this is a special permit for 14 Edgemere Boulevard, Michael Capurso, for Section 4B to alter an existing two-family dwelling and add a deck. Uh, this is a public hearing. Could I ask the applicant to please introduce themselves and explain their application to the board? Is Mr. Capurso out there? Gonna remind you, star six, we'll unmute your phone. Hmm.
There are two numbers on there I don't recognize.
Oh.
Yep.
Hello?
Wonderful. Mr. Capurso?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Welcome, yes, if we could ask you to please, um, give us an idea of what you're looking to do at 14 Edgemere Boulevard, please.
Uh, what we're looking to do is an existing two-family. And there's a couple things. We're looking, one, to update it. Um, the roof is in disrepair, and so it's an existing two-family, and that's what we wanna maintain, not going beyond the existing perimeter of the foundation, other than adding a rear deck out the back to make the, uh, second floor code compliant. And that's pretty much, uh, what we're looking to do.
Okay. Uh, Bernie, do we have any additional information to add?
No, I think that was a pretty succinct summary. I, um, believe I put it, I summarized it in my own letter as demolition and reconstruction of the second floor, um, just to be as accurate as possible, and then the proposed deck, but otherwise, that's it really.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, this is, um, okay, so let me get the board's feedback on this. Lisa, could I start with you?
Uh, so if they're not changing the footprint, with the exception of adding a deck that is, uh, from the plan, looks to be in line with the existing non-conforming setback, so I really don't have any issues.
Thank you. Peter?
I'm all set, thanks.
Thank you. Patrick?
All set.
Thank you very much, and Paul?
All set.
Great, thank you, and I too am all set. Um, this is a public hearing, are there any members of the public that wish to be heard on this matter? Give you a few seconds to unmute if you're out there. And I think everyone is accounted for, so I do not believe there's anybody out there. So I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, do I have a motion to approve a special permit to allow for the construction of a new 10 by 12 deck and the demolition and reconstruction of a second story at 14 Edgemere Boulevard?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
And Mary Beth, aye, so moved. Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've got some new business. Um, we need to amend the date for our December, uh, zoning board of appeals hearing. Um, we are proposing that the new hearing be held on December 21st at 6:30. I'd like to get a motion, please. I can see Lisa motioning, but she's on mute.
Uh, motion to approve the change of date for the December zoning board hearing.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye. Thank you, so moved. Next on the agenda, uh, this is a request for a de minimis change to 6 Kings Point Drive. Um, Attorney Ricker, are you able to give us an idea of?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, members of the board, you may recall, this is a, uh, this was a permit that you approved to demolish, uh, the existing house on, on the end of Kings Point and to rebuild a new house. Uh, John Salem, his engineer and his design, uh, consultant, I believe, are with us still, maybe, but, um, I should be able to answer the questions. This comes before you because it, um, of a design change at the very, uh, I would almost call it a field change, uh, just as they were getting ready to pour the foundation and they had, they had it staked, um, and they were digging it. Um, I guess what happened was they, they determined that they wanted to turn the house by about three and a half degrees, three and a half degrees out of 360, uh, mind you, and, uh, in, in order to basically, um, maximize the view that they're gonna get from various parts of the house. So it's a, I would suggest to you, very minor change. Um, you know, the, the planning board has a procedure to, to deal with these things, and, and it's called a request for a de minimis change. I think, uh, I would assume that you're probably gonna want to do the same thing at some stage if, if we are held to the very strict standards of, of a plan and you find that you have a, a minor change that you wanna do because you've determined that it needs, you know, a few degrees change of, of angle. Um, you know, it would be a shame to have to come back and, and file for a whole new, um, special permit. Um, so that's the nature of this. Uh, I respectfully suggest to you, as I, as I have, that it is a very de minimis change, um, and, um, uh, we would ask you, um, to consider that this is for good cause, a request to waive any formal or informal requirements for an application petition or appeal upon submission of my request to you, um, and, uh, this presentation, um, for you to allow the change to the plan.
Thank you, Attorney Ricker, um, Bernie?
And if you have any questions, obviously.
Thank you.
Uh, no, Attorney Ricker just read the section of the rules and regulations, I was going to quote myself, so, um, this isn't the authority the board has to, uh, waive upon a written, uh, request, uh, which we did receive. I do believe it is minor enough in nature, and, um, the zoning enforcement officer in town, um, also the building inspector, um, agreed with that, uh, assessment, so, um, we would recommend board approval.
Thank you. Gonna open it up to the board for discussion, Lisa?
No comment.
Paul?
Um, were any of the butters notified about this de minimis change?
Uh, no, um, the director butter is the sister of, of the applicant, so I think, I think she knows, and, and I'm, I'm certain they all know, because I, it's all family out there, Paul.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul, good question. Patrick?
All set.
Peter?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. Uh, do I open this up to public comment?
Nope, it's, uh, no, it's a public meeting, not a hearing, so there's no need to take public, unless you, as you as the board or you as the chair, think that it's necessary, you can, but you don't have to.
I don't think there's anybody out there that wants to talk about it. Seems to be the, uh, must be the rain tonight, nobody wants to talk to us. Could start getting a complex. Okay, uh, can I get a motion to approve a de minimis change to 6 Kings Point Drive?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we're gonna give that one to Peter, can I get a second?
Go for it, somebody.
I can't second it myself.
And I can't.
For Paul, can I get a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, can I get a motion, or can I get a, um, what do I need?
You didn't need to close, did you close a hearing, or that's just approved? You don't need to close, you don't need to close a hearing, you just need to vote to approve.
Right, okay, so we are good?
We need to vote to approve. We, I think we got a second, but now we need an all in favor.
Okay, all in favor?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Mary Beth, aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and good night.
All right.
Good night, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. Uh, so last but not least is the 2021 ZBA calendar. Um, yeah, and I hope everyone had a chance to review it, double-check any dates, make sure everything is, uh, works out. If you see anything in the months ahead and you realize it's, we put a date on a holiday or something, please let us know as soon as possible, so we can get it changed for the, you, the board can change it quickly, um, and in time, so, but otherwise, I reviewed it, it's been reviewed by others, so I think it's okay to go, so we just need your, uh, I guess, I don't know, technically we have to do it, but we've always done it in town, have a vote to approve, so.
Motion to approve 2021 calendar.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye, so moved. Thank you, everyone, very much. Anything else?
No, glad we didn't lose power, so that's great.
Yeah.
Everyone stayed, uh, on, so that's great.
Great.
Motion to adjourn.
On, a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Lisa.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye, good night, everyone.
All right, good night, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, bye now.